I didn't say that.
I heard it.
No.
Really tough, like, I don't get up there much. They're, they're very. Last time, I'm gonna go up here in a couple of weekends.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Kind of things are off because he told everyone not to.
Right. The best one, but.
Go up. Best in Hayward. I'm gonna go up here on the 20th. You go fall fast. Spinning out, going around here and make. They do like to bird hunt.
Oh, no.
Do that.
He's not listening.
Don't stop.
If it's un-hunting, I don't.
Well, it's now six o'clock. I'd like to call the county meeting to order. Please ask you to stand and join the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For our poll shows, we have 20 supervisors. We do have a quorum. Item four would be the approval of the agenda.
More moves?
Lot seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments, questions? Not then, we will call the vote to approve the agenda. Okay, vote is 20 to zero, the agenda is approved. Item five is members of the public wishing to be heard. We will allow each person up to five minutes to speak if they would like to. First on the list is Leo Krokowski. You're welcome to come up and. And speak.
Yeah, Leo Krokowski, I live, uh, this is concerning parking on Highway S. I live on a kitty corner from the parking lot from 1917. It used to be the old Edge. And we have no problem over there, except the entryways. If we had setbacks, it would be fine. It's been years, we were out there 40 years, and the growth in Anson has been tremendous. The milk trucks turned to semis. I know it's busy out there. Speed is the main concern. We have, over the years, other people have been parking along there and there is, we've never had any issue with it, neighbors parking or any meetings that have gone on around the neighborhood, parties. So, seems like, uh, if the traffic would slow down, I don't want to be the one to say it's, uh, it's okay to have an accident, but you can have an accident anywhere. And, uh, why close that down for parking if you're not going to close down the whole county for parking on the white line? That's about all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Hanon.
Thank you. My name's Mike Hanon. I live on 95th Avenue, just a few doors down from 1917. Leo kinda summarized it pretty well. We don't have troubles out there. I, I'm not really here to address the safety. I'm here to kinda remind us all of the almost landmark status that that venue has. I was raised in Chippewa. I went to my first communion reception at the Edge. I've attended Christmas parties, reunions, family, class, wedding receptions, just so many events. And now I live a couple of doors down. I hear laughter, I hear mu- music, and it reminds me of all the amazing times I've had there. It's a great business. It's a great ambassador for the Chippewa Valley. It welcomes tourists on the lake. It brings tourists and locals together so the locals can be their, uh, do their embassy, embassy, uh, ambassador work and show the rest of the country and all of our, uh, tourists just how wonderful the Chippewa Valley is. I would ask the county board just to apply some common sense, maybe some like you see in school zones. Slow down when pedestrians are present. Looking at different parking, uh, options, because I've heard of two. Opening up parking on the west side of Highway S between the Edge and the bridge. Placing, uh, you know, barriers, giving that window at, at the entrances. We've, we've got that now and everyone honors it. So I've had absolutely no problems with, with pulling out of Highway 95 safely. But I thank you for your time and I, I just hope you all apply common sense and help this venue thrive well into the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason Darley.
Hi, I'm Jason Darley. I'm one of the partners at 1917. Thank you both for your comments there. You know, uh, common sense was one thing that I heard from, I think, three or four times there. Uh, that's what we've been asking for as, uh, one of the partners and, and actually I'm gonna take credit, Loopy, I started the band here. And I started this band to bring something to Chippewa Falls that, uh, you know, we needed, I felt, on Lake Wisota. It's the only place that we can serve a lake that is the third largest lake in the state of Wisconsin, food to most of the residents on that water, most of the residents who visit that water. We can seat 425 people. We have roughly 72 slips, 22 of which are transient slips, okay? That means in and out per the DNR regulations, that means we have 50 renters. This place has been around and thriving in many different eras for decades and decades. I grew up less than two miles from there for most of my life. Parking has always been in there. We've got signs up showing the, the original bridge construction across Eagle Rapids Drive. Incidentally, what we call one of our private spaces, the Eagle Rapids Room. We have seen people park there safely on the side of the road, which by the way, has pretty large shoulders where you can open your door fully on the east side of the road. We're talking about shutting down. Open your door fully, I drive an SUV, I can open it fully, get out and not even be a full step from the fog line. Again, back to the common sense suggestions there. We have asked prior to our even opening, we went out proactively, put out our own candlesticks, i.e. road cones, contacted the county, and we've been trying to get to a common sense solution that enhances safety, but also allows us to serve the residents of this community and our tourists, okay? That's what we're here to do. We're excited to do it. We have a lot of different things going on as the three partners, Kim and Darren's son, Kim's here, Darren's out of town, Loopy, who will be speaking, and myself. We, we put a lot of our, our personal things aside to do this for this community. The way that this has come about, not great. There's emotions maybe on both sides. There are common sense solutions. We're looking to get to those common sense solutions and what has been proposed is drastic and heavy-handed. We want to get through that. We want to be able to work with and collaborate with the county, and that, that has been our goal and is our goal from day one. And we hope that we can, we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you. You have William Lupe.
Thank you, everyone. My name is William Kleik, most you know me as Lupe. I've had Lupe's on Highway X for almost 29 years now. I was at The View for almost 10 years before that. I've been a big part of this community for a long time. I refer to Chippewa Falls as heaven, so this is, this is where I, my roots are and this is where I'm gonna stay. As Jason has said, none of us partners needed this, this project. We, we did this because we saw there was a need on Lake Wisota. We want to bring something special to the area. We were told that we really didn't do our due diligence on the parking when we bought this by some, some of the members here, and I don't know what that would even mean, that we did, we thought that they were gonna take our parking away from us. I wasn't really sure what that all meant. But we came up proactively to make this safe. We want this safe for all the citizens of our community. It's, it's one of our priorities. That's why we put out the cones to begin with, uh, past the driveways, past the, the roadways. We thought we came up with a common sense approach with this. We thought if we put these cones out about 60 feet away from the entrance to the driveways, the roadways, it'd be far enough for sight patterns. We suggested maybe slowing that area down to 40 or 35 miles an hour, maybe a flashing light, some, some street lights up there, I think, would take care of that. We were told that the road was built at, at a speed that it didn't matter what they did out there for the speed limit, that people wouldn't slow down. Well, I think if the cars are already on the side of the roads, if there's a flashing light, common sense again dictates that those people will slow down for that area. Again, we want it to be safe for this community. I don't want to see an accident out there, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. But if you take away all the parking from the bridge, all the way up to Highway O, um, you will ma- you will debilitate our business. It will not be a viable business without that parking. We have looked at other options. There's no other property that's adjacent to us or close enough by to purchase, um, to expand that parking. We bought this business with the idea that that parking would be there available to us, um, and I'm, and I'm wondering what we're doing here today. I asked the sheriff what they had for complaints on this. There was four complaints. One was fishing off the bridge, which has nothing to do with us. One was from a disgruntled employee from the past employer, and two were anonymous. So we don't know if that was the same person or not. The sheriff's department went and checked all of those complaints out. They found that there was no parking violations out there. The sheriff even stated at the commission meeting that he didn't see a need to, to, to take the parking down or away from us on that, on that roadway. You've heard from a couple of the other citizens that live out there that there's not an issue with getting on and off their roads. We would really like to work with the highway commission on this to come up with a common sense approach. Like we said, maybe it's 60 feet from the center of each driveway where we've already put the cones originally. The county said we couldn't put those out, so they came and put their own cones out almost identically or exactly where our cones were, and it, and it seems to be working. People are slowing down. You can see sight patterns off of those roads. When you get up towards County O, that whole thing widens way, way up. If you've ever driven out of where the golf courses are coming off of Highway O, you can easily see north and south out of there. So I'm just trying to figure out why this all came about. I mean, we're doing highway studies on basically two anonymous complaints. I know the highway commissioner mentioned that he had gotten some, got, had received several phone calls, but there's no call log to that, there's no, uh, no written comment on what those, what those complaints were. So right now, we're doing this entire thing on two anonymous complaints, and I really hope that we're not gonna be run, making decisions in the county and running our government off of two anonymous complaints. I think there's a common sense approach that we can all come together and make this work for all of us. And I'm just, I'm kind of at a loss for words with, with what's even happened here. There's really only one other place in the entire county where there's a business where there's no parking in front of it, and it just happens to be Lupe's Highway X. So I, I don't know what the motivation on this is, but I do think that if we work together with the commission and with the county, we can come up with a common sense approach and make it safe and make that business viable for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for approval.
There's no second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion, questions on any of this? And the dates, there for meetings? Okay. Just, just point out that the, um, the November 12th, is that? The November 12th date is a, is a Wednesday? Just ran through your tent and it's a different date than normal. We have November with the budgets going on, we have two meetings in. Okay, if there's no more questions, then we will take a vote to approve the consent agenda. Okay, consent agenda is approved, 20 to zero. Item seven are reports. Move on to general reports, the 2024 audit report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm April Anderson from Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, here to present the 2024 audit report. So thank you for having me here this evening. So your audit report is about 80, 90 pages long, and so similar to what we've done in the past, so a lot of you are familiar with this as you've been around and seen this, is that we'll go over what's called the executive audit summary. So we have that up and, um, the full audit report is available, but we pull out the key pieces of information for you here. As I said, the, the full audit report, 90 pages, is a little overwhelming, so we'll key in on the, um, highlights of the year. So for the first overall results, um, the second one, the audit opinion, we issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements for the year. And so that's what you have received in the past. That's the highest opinion that you can receive and what you're striving to get. So that means that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow as a governmental entity. So hats off to your, your team here that does, uh, your financial, um, processing and accounting, reporting and that sort of thing as, um, as that we are able to issue that opinion. In addition to that, as we do go through the audit, we are required to communicate to you any findings that we have in deficiencies or weaknesses that we see in internal controls. And here you'll see that we didn't report any deficiencies. So again, um, due to the structure and the, um, individuals that you have involved in, within the processing of activity, um, they're segregated as, as best as they can be to eliminate any weaknesses there or any material weaknesses. In addition to not only the financial audit that we complete, we also complete what's called a single audit for the federal and state funding that you receive. And so with that, we don't test every program that you have, but we do have to review and test items there, and we did not have any compliance issues or anything that we reported through that particular part of the audit either. So obviously, um, overall results are, are positive there with no findings and your unmodified opinions. So now we will get into some of the numbers, so we'll sneak down to page six where we can see the numbers. And so here, I'll highlight just some of the actual results for the year, and we start off with the general fund. And you can see we show a few years of activity as far as just, you know, looking at trends and how things may have changed over the last few years. I will not go over every number or line item here, but we'll just key in on some of the maybe major changes or some of the amounts that we key into as, um, as far as the financial health of the, the county. So here we start off with your general, uh, main operating fund, the general fund, and we have your asset, the balance sheet, which is your assets at the top less your liabilities, and then that fund balance is the net of your assets, less your liabilities. So, um, as I said, not gonna key in on every line item here, we'll actually get down to that fund balance line item, and if you want to scroll just a little bit so we can see how that fund balance changed. So the fund balance, as I said, is the net of your assets less your liabilities. So that's what's really considered available for, in the general fund, um, for future operations and activities. And so here you'll see that your fund balance from 2023 to 2024 increased by that 1.2 million at the bottom there, the bottom line. And so it increased from 24.1 million to 25.4 million. And a lot of that increase, um, really happened because of good market returns and that you were able to earn quite a bit on your investments. And so that was the, kind of the main reason for, for that increase. And as you can see, a few years back, it had decreased because the market was down a bit and, and you had some losses on your investments. So that's turned around in the last couple of years, which has helped you, um, increase your fund balance. So when we look at that fund balance section, you'll see that there's different, there's four different line items of the different parts of fund balance or the different types of fund balance. So that 24, 5 million is made up of 1.7 million that's considered non-spendable. And so that are, those, that's made up of items up in your assets that aren't like available cash or readily available to be used. So that relates to delinquent taxes that, um, you don't know when you're gonna collect them, they might not be collected for quite a while, and, um, some prepaid items where that cash is already gone and, um, will be expensed in, in future periods. So those non-spendable items are kind of taken out of that overall 25 million dollar balance initially as not really being available to spend. Then you have a signed fund balance of 8.5 million, and that is made up of, uh, set aside a fund balance that you have identified specific purposes of that use of fund balance. And so like carryovers that you've, you have, um, and that is made up of some bigger items such as 1.1 million is set aside for facility projects and costs that you'll have in the future for facilities. You have about 790,000 set aside for a security plan, and then another big amount, um, in that 8.5 million overall is unfunded benefit liabilities. You have 1.5 million set aside for those expenses that you're planning to have in the future, um, in that you're setting those funds aside for those particular, uh, types of activities. There is quite a list of other items too, but those are some of the bigger items that you have funding set aside. So then ultimately, what you get down to is that unassigned fund balance, the 15 million. And so that's what's considered kind of truly available to be used for future operations. And so what we look at there as far as a benchmark is that balance, the unassigned fund balance, to your annual expenditures. And you'll see that that percentage is at 37.8% at, uh, the end of 2024. And so you've been in that range between 30 to 40% over the last four years, and the gen- general recommendation for that percentage in county policy is to have that between 25 to 33%. And then, um, I know your bonding agi- agency kind of recommends that to be about 35 to 40%. So looking between 25 to 40% are kind of the general recommendations for that, uh, percentage, and, and you fall right within that. So what that means is that you have enough set aside or available, um, in your fund balance for those unknown expenditures that could potentially occur. And, I mean, obviously you don't ever know what's gonna happen, but that's a comfortable level that hopefully you can sustain, you know, um, operations if, if there are some unknown activities to occur. So, um, that is obviously good results for the general fund as far as being able to sustain that level of the unassigned fund balance. Then as we go into the next page here, we look at the rest of your funds, and, um, here, item number two is your special revenue fund. So what we're showing here is just the ending fund balance for each of these funds at the end of the year. And, um, I'll just hit on a couple of the bigger funds with more activity or maybe some that have changed over the last couple of years significantly. So first of all, your human services fund, obviously a lot of activity goes through there. And, uh, the last couple of years, uh, that balance has increased to about nine, a little over 900,000, almost a million dollars. And so you have that, these are considered self-sustaining funds, so generally certain revenues, grant revenues, charges for services that are coming into, um, these funds for particu- those particular activities and purposes. And so with that, um, last year, the human services fund actually was able to transfer 750,000 over to the general fund, and this year though, um, oh, sorry, I said that backwards, 750 from the general fund had to be transferred to get to that 980,000 last year, whereas this year, the, um, revenues really did exceed the expenditures in that, that fund, and so you were able to transfer back now 1.2 million to sustain that $900,000 balance for future operations of those activities. Another one that we like to look at here is the county sales tax fund, um, because you have quite a bit of activity that does flow through this fund. And so you'll see that that balance is at 16.1 million at the end of 2024, and you had about 8.8 million of sales tax revenues that came into here along with some, um, additional revenue with interest earnings. And then you transferred 9.1 million out of this fund. Part of that is used to alleviate property tax. So you transferred out about 4.6 million to the general fund, um, again, to alleviate some of the costs and the property tax that is, um, levied there. And then you also utilized 1.1 million for debt service repayment, and about 3.4 million was transferred to the highway fund for those types of activities. So you were able to utilize 9.1 million for those other activities and services, but still maintain, um, the balance in here at about 16 million. Then, um, a couple other ones that I wanted to point out a little bit further down, you have the American Rescue Plan Act that you had the last few years. Since COVID, and you received in 21 and 22, overall amount of 12 million, um, in that funding, and so now at the end of 2024, it was all to be obligated and you actually spent it all down then or applied it all against expenditures. So you have no more ARPA funding, um, left then at the, at the end of 2024. And then the second to last one is opioid settlement. So that is some newer funding in the last couple of years that you've received and are expected to receive, um, you know, into, over the decade or so, um, are expected to receive that funding to be utilized for those particular, uh, purposes related to the opioid settlement that, um, was met. And then the very last one was just a non-metallic mining, uh, reclamation. So that was a new thing in the current year where you received some funding there, um, but used, it needs to be used for a particular purpose of, um, the reclamation. So then we'll move on to item number three and number four, where you, we have the capital projects funds and your debt service funds. And so, um, uh, capital projects funds normally do kind of go up and down from year to year depending on the activities. So you generally, this year you issued debt, and then that will be used for capital projects, uh, projects and, um, purchases in 2025. So, um, obviously you have a bigger fund balance there, but that will be spent down then into the future on those particular, um, purchases and costs. In the debt service fund, that fund is used for that particular purpose of levying or transferring funding in to pay for your debt service requirements each year. And so you'll see there that at the end of 2024, you do have a balance in there of 228. And so you'll see there that at the end of 2024, you do have a balance in there of 228,000. So generally, you don't have, you usually wouldn't have too much of a balance in here, except for if there's premium on debt. And so you did get a premium on the debt that was issued this year. And so that balance is sitting there to make, you know, future interest payments on that debt. In this fund, this year, you did make 1.5 million of principal payments on your debt and about 280,000 of interest payments on your debt through this fund. Then another fund that you report is your farmland development fund. And here we show a little bit more detail, but just going to kind of focus in on the, the bottom section of how the fund has changed, the fund balance or the net position has changed over the last couple of years. And really not too much activity the last two years. You had some bigger activity there in '21 and '22 of some land sales, some significant land sales. And then in the last couple of years, it's been kind of minimal amount of sales offset by just the operational costs that you have there for the economic development. In your highway department fund here, again, showing a little bit more active, or more of the balance sheets or the statement of net position and balances over the last few years, but we will kind of focus in on the bottom section there of how your balance has changed in that fund and where you sit there. So you'll see that the change in net position was an increase of 3.3 million this year. And that was a big result of the, the transfer that I did mention earlier, the transfer from the county sales tax fund. So you were able to transfer some funding into there for this, for activities and projects and costs that you have related to your highway operations here. So one benchmark that we do look at for this type of reporting in, in the highway fund is called the current ratio. So that is your current assets, your actual available cash, current receivables compared to your current liabilities that you have payable and due. And you want that to be at least a one-to-one ratio. And in your highway department, at the, for 2024, it's at 9.5, and it was 5.8 in '23. So you have a good amount of current assets to be able to make your current payables and liabilities that are due. So that's positive there, because sometimes I know the highway departments do, depending on how they do move cash in to cover some of those construction and maintenance costs and stuff, do run the current ratio pretty low, even the low ones. So you have a good amount of funding there then to, to be able to provide those activities, those services and activities. Then you have a few other, what's called internal service funds as far as kind of fun, activity that really supports the, the operations of the high, sorry, of the county. And so here you have insurance funds. The first one is your workers' comp. And the county policy is to kind of keep that net position around a million dollars. So you'll see that sometimes it kind of goes lower than that, and then you kind of assess where, where things will be. And then probably next year, you'll, you know, transfer some funding in to get it back up to that million dollars, to be able to, you know, have enough resources there in case you have any claims or higher claim years. Similar for the self-funded health insurance, this can kind of ebb and flow from year to year depending on if you have high claim years or not. And so this kind of started back, the county started this back up in 2021. And so you'll see that the fund balance or the, the net position has gone down over the last couple of years. And so in, in 2024, it was definitely a high claim there. You'll see that the operating loss was about 1.7 million. So, but you did, you were able to transfer some funding in there, the 2.2 million, to help offset that, that high claims year and those expenses. And then you have a self-funded liability insurance, which also saw a decrease in the balance that that fund has. And so again, these will be ones that you'll just kind of keep your eye on as far as if you need to move funding over there to cover some of these costs. If you have, continue to have high claims and high costs versus the activity that you have, the premiums and stuff that you have going in there. And then your very last fund report is the flexible benefits fund, so the Section 125 benefits. And generally, this fund doesn't change too much from year to year. You'll see that you transfer about $6,000 in there each year to help cover these costs. And this year, the admin expenses were a little higher than that $6,000. And so that's why you see that the, the change in net position is a negative. So your expenses exceeded your revenues in there this year. So those are all the different funds and activities that the county reports, the results of each of those. The last thing that we'd like to highlight with you is just the long-term obligations that the county has outstanding. And so here you'll see the general obligation debt. And so that obviously with the debt that you issued in 2024 to be used in 2025 for capital projects, you see that that increased from the 8.4 million to the 10.3 million. And the bottom line in this section, you'll see that every county has a general obligation debt limit, which is 5% of the equalized value within the county. And so you have a pretty, you're utilizing 2.1% of your overall debt limit. So average of the counties that we work with in Northwest Wisconsin utilizes about 0 to 20% of their debt limits. So usually, I mean, the debt limit is significant for a county that generally it doesn't, your utilization percentage isn't too high of, of what it could be. And then other long-term obligations that we, here is just some long-term agreements that you have for particular software or equipment. And so that's the next couple of lines and the estimated obligations there. And then the vested employee benefits obligations is estimated at about 2.9 to 3 million dollars overall for the county. And if you recall, I had said that, so that's an estimated liability of what your employees have earned at this point in time to be paid out in PTO-type or sick vacation-type leave, compensated absences. And as you can remember, talking about the general fund, you do have 1.5 million set aside for those particular types of, you know, payouts that might occur to the future. So, so you do have some funding set aside there for the possibility, you know, of when that estimated liability would be paid out. So overall, as I said, you know, positive results for your general fund as far as where that ended up, being able to add to the fund balance and then, you know, maintain and sustain that percentage of unassigned fund balance to your overall expenditures. And then ultimately, you know, the rest of your funds are sitting, no huge changes or, you know, oddities that would cause concern with the rest of your activities, so.
Questions for April? A lot here.
Yes, there is.
Supervisor Hennig.
Excuse me, ma'am. Tell me if I'm correct, that we have a maximum limit of 468 million available credit? And I don't know if that's the right terms or not.
Well, I guess the two-point credit as far as just your general obligation debt? Or?
Debt capacity.
Debt capacity, okay. Well, you're utilizing 2% of what it overall could be, so it'd be more than 460.
Okay. The question I have is, if we take on a large amount of millions of dollars in debt and we default on it, how does that hurt us in the long run?
Well, that's backed by the, your tax levy. So essentially, it's saying that you couldn't default on it, you'd have to levy taxes to pay it back.
Right. I know that we'll, we'll be responsible for it. What I'm saying is if we, we borrow a lot of millions out and it, it cannot be paid, it comes back on us county to pay it, how does that hurt us?
So you're loaning it out to like other entities for economic development? Or you're saying you're taking borrowing?
Just a what if?
Sorry, I don't know if I...
What she's saying is that anytime we borrow money, whether we bond for it or state trust fund loan, we're pledging the taxing authority of the county to be able to pay that loan. So like she said, there's really no way for us to default on it. We'll be forced to levy that on the taxpayers. Now, could it hurt our bond rating, credit rating? Potentially, but you'd actually have to have a pretty large default to do that to actually hurt your credit rating.
What would you consider a large default? 1 million, 5 million?
Well, I shouldn't even call it default. If you were to use, I mean, for financials, to not, not healthy, or if we were highly leveraged, like we used up a lot of our debt capacity, that's probably where you'd see more impact on the credit rating.
So 5, 10, 15 million wouldn't hurt us that bad?
No. And actually, we've talked with our bond council about this within the last few months. Yeah, if we were to borrow 10 million and have to be responsible for it, it's not going to, in the grand scheme of our financials, it is a blip.
Okay.
Yeah.
Give me just one minute. Back to the previous page. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as he said, if you took that, I mean, that would just change that percentage at the bottom there, but you would still be at a very low percentage use of your overall debt capacity. So, and yeah, the chance, or actually defaulting would not really be possible, you know, based on it being backed by the tax levy, so. But yeah, the bond rating could potentially change if you end up taking out a lot of debt and depending on how the rest of your financials could potentially change from that to, you know, looking at that general fund, unassigned fund balance. I know they look at that when they're looking at the bond ratings sometimes, among many other factors as far as development in the area and things like that, so.
If I understand, what you're saying is, we're really doing a good job.
Yes, you guys are at a very comfortable level as far as where your financials stand and the amount of debt that you do have currently.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. Always nice to see, see good news. Hopefully complacent, because we've been keeping it there for a while. Department reports, monthly claims?
There were no new claims since our last meeting.
Good news. Item two, the Chippewa County website and agenda management software update.
We are getting a new look to our website, we're switching companies. And so the website that you see now will be brand new in, when is it, October 30th?
October 30th is the targeted goal by this point.
So that's exciting, and a lot of it you're going to see is going to be a little different, kind of making everything standardized between the departments, new look, new feel. When you look at menus, it's going to be more user-friendly, things alphabetized, it's just overall going to be a new look. It'll be a fresh look for all of us too. And then to go along with that, we are updating and getting a new software system for the agendas and minutes. So the system you've been using is going away, and that will be going live with in November, so right after this. Next month, we will try to be bringing forward what all that looks like on your end, maybe a little bit of training, how you'll navigate the new site. We're all still learning, we started the first round of website training this week, and I'm not sure if we have our software training. Tracy and I and Andy start our software training in earnest tomorrow. We've been working with them on the implementation and getting everything set up. And then we'll be training all the meeting clerks probably the end of the month and into October. And the first meeting will be economic development, that we'll be using the new agenda software. And then we'll jump right into our budget hearing. So it'll be an interesting time, because it's always busy for all of us right there too. So in your packet, plus you guys were emailed it, kind of outlines kind of the timeline and some of the reasons why and the history behind why we're switching as well. So if you have technical questions, that's Andy. If you need the cheerleader positive comments, that's me.
Yeah, and I think Jackie hit on all the high points. The one thing I'll mention is the Agenda Minutes software is the same company that does our website now that we're going to. So hopefully that'll make a little bit smoother integration between those two platforms, making, posting the meetings and stuff online a little bit easier and a little bit more user-friendly for the public as well.
For questions, are you going to do a re-image of the iPads or just we're up, we're on our own page links?
The URL for the county website is not going to be changing as we do the transition, so all the existing links will, should still work as far as the main homepage. The sub-pages and stuff though, if you have bookmarks or things like that, those will need to be updated. So we'll be able to look at the iPads and what's been pushed out there to make sure that we, some of those things up.
Supervisor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing, if it's possible with, and I don't know what the capabilities of the new agenda software is, one thing that I have heard from constituents, when I'm talking to them about what we're looking at, when we get our emails with the agenda, it's, it's very handy, we have itemized, you know, we can click links and go to specific documents on specific agenda items. When you navigate our agendas in the portal and you go to it, you basically have a packet and a summary, and you have to go to page 437 to find the one link that I can click on for, you know, one specific document. That'd be, that'd be wonderful if that access was to everyone. I don't know if that capability is there, but if it is, I think that'd be much appreciated by the general public.
We, I, we should have that now for the public too.
Not in the general meeting.
You just have to click, instead of clicking agenda packet, you have to click the actual date of the meeting.
Yeah. The, the outline link?
Yeah. Click on where it gives you like the actual data then. So like...
I'll, I'll check it out.
That's what I have on here. So it'll give you this interactive, that way you could, you know, let you only open up the document you're looking for, and you don't have to scroll through 500 pages to get to what you want.
So there you have the agenda outline and agenda packet links.
Yep, but to the left, the date, with the dates.
So instead of doing...
I don't know if those, those agendas, I don't think, are on out there?
Here on this, instead of clicking this...
So if you go here...
...the actual date of the meeting, and then you'll get to this.
And then you can go to any one of the items.
Fair enough. Thank you, I was wrong. That's, that was something that I, I always went off the emails and everyone else clicked on the packets, and they asked me what page it was on, and I said, I don't know. Appreciate that.
I think, because this does have the links, doesn't it, when you...
In the bookmarks? I think it does, you have to expand it.
We can move on, this is not that important. Thank you.
Supervisor Hennig.
I was just going to suggest, if you're changing things, you know, you're good at what you do, I'm good at what I do, but I don't do what you do. And what you do is, is great to me. So it'd be very helpful for me, and I'm sure some of the others, to have a basic explanations of, of walking through this maze that we do. I think it would be very helpful, less questions asked, if you guys could find time down the road, it'd be appreciated.
I believe the plan is to bring that in October.
Yes.
To do it as a whole for the group, but then if anyone needs any extra, like one-on-one, we can schedule meetings and people can come in and we'll sit down and go through it all.
Yeah, and the website isn't quite to the point where we wanted to bring it to show you guys tonight, so we want to make sure we're in a little bit better spot as the implementation forward.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. Will you eventually make an app for the website?
So the website is mobile-friendly, so it will show nicely on mobile devices, it's not a specific app. There's pros and cons to that, and when you look at it, one of the nice things of it not just being an app is that any device can pull it up and it should be able to function the same. We've looked at it in the mobile devices and it does scale nicely, it adjusts the buttons, so it's a little bit easier, more user-friendly. I'm not a... I'm not a great design person to compare like what we have today on the mobile version versus the new one. But that is one of the big things that we asked for is to make sure it was nice and mobile friendly.
Even like the GIS stuff too?
So the GIS website is outside of the normal site. It's an actual different application that runs and drives that. So that will be the same as what it is today. That's not built into the normal website. Good question.
That one's not mobile friendly.
I would agree with that.
Any more questions? All right, thank you. Move on to item three is our second quarter financial update. Do you?
Didn't get enough financials today. Okay, so we'll be going over the second quarter financial update here. What we'll be focusing on is the revenues that are under. The revenues that are under 50% and the expenses that are over 50%. First, I'll go through this first. These are the definitions that have been in the packet or in the presentation previously and are not changed at all. Okay. So the first item is the county board. You can see here that the expenses are, work a pointer over there. That column is the over 50% and then this column will be the revenues under 50%. So the expenses for county board, you'll see are 68.4%. And that's because of the annual contracted services. Those are paid at the beginning of the year. So by the end of the year, those will even itself out. And then we have the general county. You'll see that those revenues are under the 50%. And that's because we receive our state shared revenue dollars in the fourth quarter, generally around November timeframe. By the time that comes around, they'll come back up. And then next you'll have the county clerk. And those revenue, or excuse me, the expenses are at 87%. And that's due to the library allocation that goes out at the beginning of the year. And this year that was just over a million dollars. So again, by the end of the year, that will even itself out. Not highlighted here, but I do want to point out for the county treasurer, you'll see that those revenues are very high, 169%. And that's due to the rates that we are seeing in the investment pool right now. Those rates are at 4.36%. And then the register of deeds. You can see those revenues are just slightly low. And that's based on the economy and the housing market. And then child support. You can see those are a little under two. They receive their, their, their dollars quarterly, their state aid quarterly. So those will come back in probably shortly here. We've already received them, they're just not on the report. And then this is just a recap of the previous slide. And then here we have our special revenue funds. So just want to point out for public health, ADRC and human services, those revenue sources usually come in about a month behind. So you can see ADRC a little bit behind due to the timing of the funding. And then the recovery and wellness consortium, those dollars usually two to three months behind on receiving those, those revenues. So that's typical for this time. For jail assessment, those revenues are also a little bit behind. These are the fees on the fines that the clerk of court collects. So we don't really have a lot of control over, over these revenues and when they come in. And then land records. And these, some of these revenues are also related to the register of deeds office. So when those are done, these ones are done as well, which is related to the housing market and the economy. And not highlighted, but on the very bottom there is the non-metallic mining reclamation. I don't have it highlighted, but I just want to point out the revenues that we are receiving in that fund right now are from the investment pool. Those are all interest dollars. And then just a recap. We'll come into the sales tax fund. And these dollars are, we received these two months in the, in past. So we received, so I pointed out here, in January, you'll see we received those, those dollars in March. Just to help me keep track of what month I'm in here. So we're about on track from where we were last year. I did take a peek ahead and we, we did exceed where we have currently been in the last two months in, in July. Well, in May and June. They're a little bit higher, so that's good. And then you'll see in here, the expenses are all paid out at 100%. And this is the sales tax that is allocated at the beginning of year for the approved KIP funds that we're already, that you guys have already voted on and approved at the beginning of the year. And then we have the opioid abatement account. And here are just the revenues we received to date and the expenses that have, we have had. And this too is similar to the sales tax where those dollars are not spent until the following year and approved through the same, through a similar process, the KIP projects, capital projects. And then you have our debt service fund. So this is where all of our principal and interest payments come out of. And you'll see by the end of the year, we will have outstanding debt of about 8.5 million. We did not bond this year, we will plan to bond next year. And the capital projects fund, and these are the dollars that we bonded for in '24 and they will be spent in '25 and '26. So this is the first half of that 3.5 that was bonded for last year. Then we have the internal services fund. The two I want to point out here are the health insurance fund. So you can see the revenues are on track. The, the expenses is where we're having a little shortfall here or we're over, rather, at 62.7%. And this is due to those high cost claims that we've had that we've spoke about earlier. And then the self-funded liability insurance, you see revenues only at 0.5. There is an allocation that we do by the end of the year to reallocate those dollars from the different departments back into this fund. And then the, the expenses you'll see are high because the premiums for this are paid out at the beginning of the year for that year. And then finally, we have the enterprise trust and agency fund. Not a lot of activity this year. We have not sold any land or anything yet, so. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Supervisor Hennig.
Thank you, sir. On ADRC. You went kind of quick, I didn't catch all of it. Are we okay?
Yes, those funds, the revenues just lag by a month. So yeah, we're right now halfway through. I think they're just slightly under there. So those revenues are just under and then the expenses you'll see are not at 50% either. So the expenses are paid out and then we collect the revenues for those.
I also saw the numbers on the child support, if you could go back to it?
Sure. Yes.
I don't understand it. Is the child support, that should be the, the money that the non-custodial parent pays, pays in, right?
Yes, and.
And is that what I'm seeing here?
The, we don't receive, we receive those funds quarterly. So we don't get our share of those dollars until a quarter. So they, we might, probably didn't receive them in June, we'll probably get them in July after the quarter's done. So they're probably, so it's like July and, you know, one month after the quarter end.
Historically, are they bound?
Yes, this is, this is typical, this is normal.
And for the health issue, I know we can't read the future.
Correct.
But when we fail, we always have a plan to get out of failure. And have you figured that out yet?
This is, so we'll speak to the health insurance and the premiums that we are going to start having the employees help out on to help cover some of. And to help, to help adjust the spend.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Any further questions? Thank you. Move on to item eight, our business items. First item is resolution 31-25, resolution to establish health insurance and funding for 2026.
Resolution 31-25, resolution to establish health insurance plan funding for 2026, read by title only.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Any more questions? Kelly, sir.
Give her a motion in a second. And question.
So this is essentially part of the plan for 2026. As we've kind of discussed at prior meetings, including the board meeting, we've been running higher expenses than budgeted for health insurance for the last 18 months of last year and all of this year. So we are trying to make some changes to the health insurance plan to maintain our competitiveness with retaining and attracting employees, but also covering some of those higher expenses by implementing an employee premium. It's been 10 years that the county's been able to have no employee premium for health insurance. And at the expenses we're running, we just can't sustain that any longer. So we're doing a contract with a consultant that helps us put this together. They told us to project rate increases of 24 and a half percent for next year. We waited as long as we could to see if that number was going to change and it just hasn't. Things have leveled off this year, but they're just looking into what things could be like next year. They still project significant increase from this year, which is an increase from last year. So the proposal is to implement our employee premium of 3.2%. I should say, there's actually two significant changes. One is the employee premium and we're going from a two-tiered system, family and single plan, to a four-tiered system, which would be single plan, employee, spouse, employee, children and family plan. And then the single plan would be at a 3, 3.2% premium for the employee and the other three tiers would be at 6.7%. So in the resolution, you can see that the, the dollar value effectively of that is for a single plan, employee would be contributing $30 a month. Employee plus children would be 124 a month. Family plan would be 212 a month, oh, and I missed employee spouse to be 150 a month. Employee children would be 212 a month. So there would be 629,000 based on current enrollees in the health insurance, 629,000 of employee premiums paid. We would also be increasing our employer contribution amount by 5% as well. That's what we're using to project that into the budget. Otherwise, we're leaving the HRA the same of $500 per person up to a max of $2,000 per family. The other thing I would point out is that, you know, one aspect of this is it's a financial change by having the employees contribute to the health insurance. That offsets some of the employer spend. But also with going to the four tiers and the way we've distributed the premiums, we're also expecting to see some shifting in enrollment. So right now we have 363 employees on our health insurance. And projecting that with the changes, some employees will choose to go off of our plan and go on to a spouse's plan. So we're at least projecting a drop to at least 350 employees. A reduction of 13, a small amount. But beyond that, we'll be, we'll see some shifting of employees going off of the family plan to employee, spouse or employee plus children, which we anticipate will change the health utilization, the utilization of the health insurance. I'll stop there and take any questions.
Supervisor Hennig.
Have you thought about, or do we have implementations on? There's other companies around the country that reward employees for giving up smoking, losing weight, et cetera, et cetera. Have we looked into that as a possible future add to our?
And we have some wellness components as part of it. Now we don't have any like cash incentives or other benefits, I don't believe. Okay, just making sure. But we do, we have looked at other wellness components. There is programs within our health insurance that employees can take advantage of, like, like weight loss is an example.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions? Supervisor.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the network availability for employees. It's pretty well-rounded if I recall, looking through the notes. It includes Marshfield Mayo Health Systems as well as Oakleaf. Is that correct? Are there any other health systems? And where I'm going with this is just wondering whether we still potentially refer out for savings when employees may need to go to the cities or what have you. Does that cover some of those referrals as well?
It does. I mean, we, like you said, the first part's correct, that it's well-rounded, that includes all the Marshfield Mayo, Oakleaf. We are, our TPA is Anthem, so whatever providers they include. And then we still have the direct care or reform med and doctors of PT that employees can go to without going through a system. We are switching from. Aletheus to Amplify, which does have some of those incentives for different providers. It's a, I've heard it called a healthcare concierge. So if employees are looking at special procedures, they can go through.
Okay.
Amplify and get directed to lower cost providers.
Got it, thank you.
Any more questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll call the vote on approving resolution 31-25. Resolution approved 20 to 0, thank you. Item two, resolution 32-25, resolution delegating authority to county administrator to enter into settle agreements with opioid defendants.
Resolution 32-25, resolution delegating the authority to enter into settlement agreements with opioid defendants to the Chippewa County Administrator, read by title only.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Goodman will make that motion.
You have a second?
For sure, I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second? Question?
So more than five years ago, I believe, the Chippewa County, like 66 other counties in Wisconsin, integrated into the class action lawsuits regarding the manufacturing and distribution and sale of opioids. That has progressed to the point where a lot of the larger settlements are completed and the attorneys or the law firms are still identifying additional defendants. Generally, these are smaller settlements, they move a little quicker. Once the legislature and the attorney general has signed off on them, they want to get them closed and get everybody committed to them. So they've asked the councils involved, provided this resolution to speed up the process a little bit. So it would allow myself to sign off on these and just report back to the committee that these settlements have occurred. If you've been here on the board long enough, you know these settlements have come in. You really don't have any way to change or amend them. They're already negotiated and you're essentially just accepting the settlement as it's presented to you. So I would be doing the same and reporting back to you. The use of the fund stays the same, it's still governed by the exhibitee of the original settlement as to how we can use the funds.
Any questions? Supervisor Shubert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How long do we expect this to go on for?
I honestly, as far as the litigation part, I don't know. It seems like they keep identifying additional defendants. They've gone through the major manufacturers, the major retailers. Now they're into the pharmacy benefit managers and the generic drug suppliers. So I think there's probably a couple more years of litigation. The settlement. The settlements, though, will continue on, some of them go out sixteen years, or if they, if they stay on their payment plan, we'll see money's coming in for sixteen years. And that, there's like some variable with that, because some companies choose to pay ahead, some have paid up the first five years, and then they wait. So, it's, that's, that part's a little irregular.
So, the part that we're just handing off is the constant administration of this payout?
Of the settlements when they, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, then we will call a vote for Resolution 32-25. I think the vote is twenty to zero, the resolution's approved. Item three, Ordinance 7-25, Ordinance to Amend Sections 12-09, 12-21, 12-71, and 12-72 of the Code of Stormwater Management. First reading.
Hello, I'm Trenton Shutter, project engineer for Land Conservation Forest Management. I'm here to present the changes to Chapter 12, Stormwater Ordinance. The proposed changes to the Stormwater Ordinance is to require long-term maintenance agreements be recorded with the Chippewa County Register of Deeds office prior to permit issuance instead of prior to permit termination. This is being done or proposed because in some instances, lots are being sold prior to these agreements being recorded, and lot owners are unaware of these roles and responsibilities that they have to maintain the stormwater ordinance or their facilities, I'm sorry. So, if these agreements are not recorded with the Register of Deeds, they do not show on title searches, so lot owners aren't fully aware. Also leads to developers recording documents on properties they no longer own. So, these changes are being done to ensure that all subsequent lot owners are aware of the roles and responsibilities that they have. I can answer any questions on the changes.
Anybody have any questions on here? No action tonight, but we will discuss.
Oh, I just, the, um, there's no when in the change, the change is in red, just saying, looks like this is something that's being added.
Yeah.
But you said it's something we're changing, just changing when it's required.
Yep, so, we wanted to be very explicit with developers and consultants that a maintenance agreement is, is recorded with the Chippewa County Register of Deeds. I do believe there is one change, I should know the section that does have a when.
Okay.
So, oh, seventy-one. Seventy-one has it, also twenty-one should have it as well. Seventy-one B says, "The approved maintenance agreement shall be filed prior to permit issuance." So, the reason that we added so much before that is to kind of squash their argument that they weren't aware that a maintenance agreement was supposed to be recorded.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, this, again, this is the first reading, and this will come before us to, probably next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, Ordinance 8-25, Ordinance to Amend Section 58-34A Regarding No Parking. First reading.
Supervisor Flader would like to make a motion to send this back to committee.
Rochelle, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to send this back to the committee for reconsideration. Let's have some, have some discussion. Are there, are there?
We, the, we want, still working. They're still working on some stuff, and we want to reevaluate it and look at some possible other solutions with this.
Yeah, you want to comment on it or take questions? Have any questions on this?
I, I can comment, or I can take questions, whatever you prefer first.
I just hope when you guys reevaluate, you guys use some common sense and not hindering local businesses that are trying to help out our economy and help out, give a service to our community, because it seems like a lot of times we neglect some of the businesses, and this is a good business, and I think we can do, you know, some common sense changes, and, and I just hope you guys take a good, serious look at this where you don't hinder the business of nineteen seventeen.
Yeah, my comment on this is, there's nobody with an agenda with nineteen seventeen. We received complaints, we received more than two complaints. Did they get logged? No, they didn't. Some of them I received, some of them my staff received, some of them the former commissioner received. But when we got those complaints, we investigated, we had to go out and take a look at it. So, what we did was just our due diligence, using standard DOT accepted practices to go out and see. So, that's how we came up with what we came up with.
Yeah, I think with the due diligence, though, you know, I'm kind of getting sick of like hearsay, I think people should be logging this stuff down, and, I mean, it's just not on your end or whatever, but certain stuff comes to this committee, and we're supposed to trust people that it's not hearsay, and I don't know why we weren't logging these. And I've been in this community for over fifty years, and they've been parking on that road forever, and I don't know why we're targeting it right, right now, and we can do, you know, common sense things to make it safe there.
We are meeting with DOT traffic engineers again tomorrow, look at this, have to have them take a closer look at it, see if we can come up with a resolution that we can bring back to committee.
Supervisor Kempy.
I would also like to see why they wouldn't lower the speed limit to thirty-five there. I mean, if it did, I know for the ATV groups and everything else, they would like to connect the trail there, that would be a huge connection with the ATV trail, that lowering the speed limit might help with not only their bar, but it would help with tourism with the ATV groups also, so the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit maybe would be something to look into.
That was discussed in the traffic safety. DOT, we have to go through DOT for approval for anything more than a ten-mile drop from statutory, which is fifty-five. That's forty-five out there, so anything under forty-five, we have to get approval from DOT. The engineer that we're going to meet with tomorrow, she was pretty explicit in traffic safety that, that they would not, without traffic calming measures, urban lighting, other, other factors, they, they will not typically drop a speed limit like that because the public will not respect it.
It is ten miles an hour, and it is, maybe it is that time, I mean, the city is moving out that far this time, maybe it is that, that's the direction we need to go with our city, I mean, it is, it's, everybody wants tourism, everybody wants stuff to succeed, and with businesses like this, there's maybe, it's just that time, we do lower that speed limit, look into that.
Yeah, you know, like I say, we're going to talk again tomorrow, see what we can come up with. There's a lot of traffic out on that road, as far as UTVs, UTVs. Our latest traffic count, which we did last week, we're at four thousand eight hundred and thirty-five cars a day, sixteen percent of them are trucks. So, would not be a good combination as far as ATVs, UTVs, but it's, it's all, we're going to go back, talk tomorrow, see what we can come up with.
Supervisor Hennig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't believe we're in a business of crippling local businesses. We're in a business of cooperating and working with them to make our county better. They're providing significant income in tax for us to run our county, and I don't think we've looked at enough options to be successful in working with them and keep that business as a business. To just say it's, it's, it's wrong isn't what we're here for. We're here to serve our citizens of our county in many ways, and that includes the businesses. They're providing Chippewa income, Chippewa County income, they're providing decades of fun and, and good business to the community. To throw it away because we can, because we're powerful enough to do that, is immoral. And I think that we need to look at sixteen ways to Sunday to find some, some obvious and maybe not so obvious solutions to this problem that we can save this business and somehow solve the problem of the increased traffic. I don't think we should give up on finding a way to help.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. Just going to agree with most of everything everybody else said there, but as we just recently found out, we can, we can spend a little bit of money, so we could probably get our hands on, maybe add in some lights out there, right? And put in the lights, the caution flashing lights or something like that, right before the bridge, probably right before Highway Old, maybe on Fridays, something like that, just even, because that's probably your busiest time. Or hopefully every day, right?
I would like to comment on that.
The cat, so.
One thing I can tell you is, we did get in some safety money, and we put the crosswalks out on Highway X, up by the wayside and up by the soda short, high showers. I get a lot of complaints from people out there that those lights are not being respected, so I'm not saying it's a bad thing to do, but you can't count on it either.
Right, but they're noticed, though, right? People are noticing them.
Yeah, they're ignoring them, but they're noticing.
Like it's?
Just want to say, I mean, it's, I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, I'm just saying that it's not a total answer.
We could also put streetlights out there, couldn't we? Or is that a DOT issue?
Streetlighting, that's, that's an option. The county doesn't really want to be in a streetlight business, it's, it's high maintenance, high cost.
Right. I mean, what's the cost of a life, though, I guess, in a business? Thank you.
Supervisor Lott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, how, how long does a thorough review take? Because nineteen seventeen only opened in May, and there's already stuff on the agenda within two months.
Well, actually, this, we pretty much kind of put the brakes on this, we didn't move it as fast as we probably could have, because we were trying to work, try and find solutions. We postponed it, bringing it to you guys to take it to traffic safety and run it through the Traffic Safety Committee. You know, that, that slowed us up there. So, um, traffic safety, DOT traffic engineer was there, it's the same, she's the same lady we're going to talk to tomorrow, see if we can find some solutions there. I guess that's, best I can tell you, I mean, we're.
Okay, and we're all in agreement that this, this facility has been in this location for years and years and years, and there's always traffic or cars parked on the sides of the road. But yet, in the committee meeting dated August twenty-seventh, someone is worried about winter maintenance and snow plowing, so it has nothing to do with the rest of the year, it sounds like. It just has to do with snow plowing?
That was an example. One of the days we met out there, I had a mower come through, he couldn't mow that section. There was a truck parked there. Winter maintenance is a major concern of mine, if the employees are parked out there, and it's mainly their employees parked out, especially right out in front. If we have a winter storm event, what am I supposed to do with the snowfalls?
Bear it. Bear the car in, you know what I mean? Like, you're going to, you're going to learn.
If there's that much snow, nobody's going to be out running around in a restaurant. There's sleet out. Thank you.
Supervisor Rochelle.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I guess I see double the lower, the speed limits there, X as well was lowered to be forty-five. I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how DOT has an issue with lowering speed limits from five or ten miles an hour. I guess my other concern is a precedence, too. So, if this changes at nineteen seventeen, what's stopping everything else getting changed, too, similar non-documented complaints?
Well, as an example for double O, that project did change parking for several businesses. They do not have on-the-road parking anymore, they lost that.
But the speed limit?
The speed limit there, I think that's forty.
Massive corner.
Excuse me?
It's quite a corner there, too.
Right.
So, that was actually called in specifically as concerned for safety, people actually in documents saying, "We can't see, there's people parking where we can't see."
You are correct.
So, there actually was documented evidence of that being an issue.
Yeah. Double O in from fifty to forty. Most of it was fifty, though.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to get, it'll get reduced to, I believe, what's your prepared for that one, forty or forty-five?
I think it's forty now, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a portion of it that was higher, it's, it's all going to be consistently the same. That was one of, that was a resolution, or an ordinance you guys passed. Couple months ago.
Okay, as we continue on the discussion, remind you, what's on the floor is just sending this back to the committee. This is not a place where we really can work out all the details and everything. Appreciate your, your inputs to them, but what our motion here tonight is to send it back to the committee for the reconsideration. We have people coming on, speaking the second time, just reminding to keep, keep mindful of that's, that's what our action is tonight, is to send it back. We, it's not a place where we're going to work out all the details. Supervisor Hennig.
Well, I guess I'm probably going to work on those details a little bit, but in the seventies, I was in Germany, I got a ticket from a camera mounted in the traffic light. This technology is fifty, sixty, seventy years old. You put some cameras out there, you get a few tickets, people are going to learn real fast. Second off, you can put signs up there for snow issues that no parking between X time and X time and Y time. For example, no parking between two PM and six AM, and do your snow plowing every day. You see that other places in this world, so you could, could have some unique ability to solve these problems by thinking out of the box and not crippling a business. And let him continue to provide entertainment and money to the county, because we get a certain percentage of everything spent. I think it's good business, but I'll stop now. Thank you, Chuck.
Supervisor Shubert.
Is this a high accident area?
Not as of yet.
Okay, so we're, okay.
All, all, all we're doing is we, when we have an issue like this come up, we have to go look at it. So, that's what we did, we went and looked at it, potential is there. So, I got to bring that to my committee and to you guys and go from there. So, that's, that's all I'm doing, is bringing forward what we should be looking at.
It sounds like we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist, so, for the count, for the people in the area in the neighborhood, so, thank you.
Supervisor Sidlitz.
I'll just make it quick, you know, and just stress, you know, the signs, you know, and the flashing lights. Obviously, not everybody's going to obey the signs and stuff. We put up signs in school zones, we put them in other areas, people don't obey them there, we still have the signs. I, I just think that we should be thinking of thirty-five mile an hour signs and proper signage out there instead of hindering a business. I'll leave that.
Supervisor Bersh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a representative for the district of this business, and I just want to thank the committee for being willing to take a look at this again. We heard in the comments, there have been multiple motions and tempers and such in this, and it was unnecessary from both sides, and I'm just glad we can come back together and look at this again. This has been a staple in our community for a long time, and we want it to continue to be a staple. And are, is there room for safety improvements that there are? And should we look at those? We should. I think a good parallel, um, situation came up in that committee meeting, actually. Um, and we've all heard about it from a, a constituent, um, the situation with farmers planting in the road right of way. And, and we're looking at that and, and we're taking in all our options and we're going through that slowly to make sure that what we do end up doing is consistent and fair to everyone involved. I think that's a really good parallel to what we're looking at here because what we do here is what other business owners across the county are probably going to expect we're going to do elsewhere. So patience and discretion and thank you for, um, being willing to reconsider this.
Okay, Supervisor Bomar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a logistic issue that sticks in my head right of way. I briefly count, there's roughly 70 parking spaces and if there's four people in each car, that could do about 280 people. We, we don't have employee parking yet, um, factored in. Um, and if there's a seating capacity of 430 people, um, with, that, there's a 130% gap in there. So 180% gap in there. So, and I'm sure we can bring 25 pontoons with eight people in at the same time. That would pretty much fill out the, the ship. But, you know, in terms of logistics, I think we need to understand, um, parking needs to match capacity somehow, or at least to some level. That's all I'm asking. So, thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, it was brought up in the public comments that this hasn't been done before, but, um, if you take a look at the road right above this one on County X in Kadat, there is both sides of X are closed around JJ's. Um, that was done before, um, but I do believe if we get this back in committee, there's, um, some room for improvement to this before we move on with it, so.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, the, the vote, the vote on the floor then would be, a yes vote would be to send this back to the committee, Senator. I will call that vote now. Okay. Votes 20 to 0. Send it back to the committee. Thank you for the, taking the time again to go over it more thoroughly. Thank you. Thanks everyone for the discussion. Facility use policy revisions, second reading. So we need a motion in a second to approve the revisions and then we'll have a discussion.
Enter so moves. Kelly seconds.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we need discussion on this? These were, these were presented last meeting. Any questions or discussion on these? Okay. If not, then we'll call the vote to approve, uh, the facility use policy revision. And the votes 19 to 1 to approve the policy revision ordinance? Or, or policy revision, yes. Item 6, HR policy manual revision to conceal carry policy, second reading. Entertain a motion to approve?
Play there so moves. Bomar seconds.
Have questions or discussion on this one? Again, this was presented last meeting on the first reading and this is the approval? Supervisor Lott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, I, I was reading through this really quickly today because I've been super, super busy, but, or any other prohibited item? And I, and I think about the metal nail file I have in my purse, so, uh, you know, I don't know if they need to be, and, and I have spoken of, um, bee spray that sprays 10 feet, so I don't know if those need to be included or not.
Don't want to even like speak to that, maybe? Or, maybe Todd?
The reason for including that language is that, I don't know, that the, the ordinance just is designed to give the safety officers some flexibility in terms of their decision to be based on whether they believe that it's a dangerous item that could cause great bodily harm. So essentially anything can be used as a weapon, depending on circumstance.
My ring.
So, yeah. They, they have to use the discretion in that regard, obviously. And this is just mirroring actually the ordinance itself for weapons in county buildings. That's why it's using that language.
Okay.
Supervisor Hennig?
As she was saying, bee spray or bear spray in your purse or a comb, they have discretion and I understand that. So are they gonna confiscate what they feel is, is not appropriate? Or, where, it's not spelled out. I don't understand what, what, what they would.
It is spelled out in the actual ordinance. This is solely making this policy consistent with the ordinance on weapons in county building. So that's a separate, that's already been approved by the county board.
Okay. So they're not gonna grab a comb or, or with a point on or something like?
They do have the ability to confiscate, but I believe it indicates in there that they essentially will, you know, have the person remove, they'll remove that item from the building. They would give that item back to them once they're outside the building.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Schubridge?
So if my understanding is correct though, is that even if the other place does have no concealed and carrying, this would, if we leave it alone, allow employees to still conceal and carry because this is their exception? It's by us taking that away explicitly here is that employees can't carry it, correct?
This just says no person.
It says.
No person.
This is the employee section of it, not just general people coming in, correct? Those are rest in different places, different.
Includes everyone.
You don't include everyone in employee area.
I think the intent when the, then they met is to match so that employees are treated the same as a public, so I think that was.
Exactly, and that's where, so my problem is, okay, we don't, one, we do not have the authority under the constitution to pass this or the other one before, and I fought the other one as well. And so we do not have the right to tell somebody they cannot bear arms. Okay, that's.
I'm not.
But that's my right to say here.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Because.
Not gonna comment on it.
Okay, but, of course, but that is our first thing we swore here is to defend the constitution. And so again, that's what I'm saying here, it is not something we can pass. And I know it's to match the other way, um, but the other way was just as unconstitutional.
Supervisor Rothmeyer? Rothmeyer, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last July, Supervisor Erickson and myself took a tour to Clark County and also to Marathon County and for a tour of their security and how it worked. They have boxes of things they've taken away from people walking into the courthouse. Many knives, uh, all types of things. And it's amazing how people walk in and the stuff that they carry. I, um, this is needed as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Supervisor Hennig?
First off, I, I happen to agree with Mr. Rothmeyer. It is needed. I am particularly worried about the federal budget and what is being taken away from many people. I think people are gonna get angry. I think people are gonna do irrational stuff. And I'm worried about the speed of implementation in this courthouse. We have particular targets in our, that people are gonna focus on. Uh, ADRC, human services, public health and housing are particular easy targets that people are gonna be mad about and we need to speed this up. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Kelly?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as a person that believes in the right to bear arms, but not, not here, people don't come to the courthouse usually for good things. Um, they're usually pretty upset, so I think, you know, this change is probably well needed. That's all I have to say.
Supervisor Lott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, any business has a right to put on their window, you know, not to bring your gun in. Um, I can't carry my gun into a bar because I might get drunk and shoot it, so there's exceptions.
Great analogy.
You know? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, if not, then we will call the vote to approve the manual, policy manual revisions. Vote is 19 to 1. The revision is approved. Thank you. Item 7, HR policy revision, care navigation and pets in the workplace, second reading. Entertain a motion to approve?
Rochelle, motion approved.
Rochelle could second. Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, so. Any questions or comments on this? Do we have any more questions to ask? Or discussion? Okay, if not, then we will call the vote. It passes 20 to 0. I, I, I would like to maybe take a five-minute break before we meet to go into the session.
First time I ever hear that.
Yeah, because that may be a long. Thank you.
Well, now it's more clear to me how, how to spray, now. That's where lining up over.
Like, stone. I never. The one that looks like the. If you're in. I know, I know.
Thank you.
Yeah, but you're not coming, but most people are. That wasn't, that wasn't, then you lose 20 years ago. Highway 27 down to 40.
Let's try to head, let's try to head back to our seats. Please go in. Come on.
Hang it down, let's go.
Are there people in the hallway?
Gee, that's totally cold, but is everybody else?
So, Joel, where do you live?
In the house? Where do you live? Come on, Jim.
If you please come in and sit down, please, and get started.
Out of what? All right. Just you.
I got one. I switched to this one.
I'll miss one supervisor, but I will, I will move on with the adjourned here and read, read the closed session item, and then we'll wait for a motion for it. By the way, the county board will convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section nineteen point eight five, parant one, parant G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adapted by the body with respect to litigation in which it or is likely to become involved, confer with attorney and take possible action on tentative settlement in Rolling Hills Equine Incorporated versus Western Region Recovery and Wellness Consortium. Now entertain a motion.
Supervisor Goodman would be happy to read that motion. County Board will convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section nineteen twenty-five, parant one, parant G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, confer with attorney and take possible action on tentative settlement in Rolling Hills Equine Incorporated versus Western Region Recovery and Wellness Consortium, closed session to include Andy Overholt, Tom Pauls, Brady Spadlets, Tracy Bremnas, all county board supervisors outside insurance, defense counsel from Cravelo, Nichols, and Hall, staff representatives from Chippewa County D H S and W R R W C, and Jack Lynn Sadler.
Will be an open session. We can add, please, that we will.
Oh, and then we'll go into open session after it's done.
Second.
A second on that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We just take the vote. We need a roll call vote, but your vote up here will be roll call.
There you go.
Okay. Vote seventeen to three. Now in closed session.
...